July 8th, 2019, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Mike Vought will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Mike?
Thank you by your head. My gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together to conduct county business. We ask that you be with all our county officials, our county first responders, as well as those state and national first responders and those that are overseeing, serving our county. We ask that you give us wisdom to the sermon as we approach the county business and do it in a way that is pleasing to you. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion. Craig Lynch. David Jones. Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Mike Kush. Mike Vought. Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen. The Phillips.
Present.
We have a form.
Thank you, Gal. We have no minutes to approve this meeting. And under items withdrawn or deferred, item 6A3, a rezoning request, the item number is 19-a013 for landdevelopment.com has been withdrawn, 6A3. Under new business, item 6A rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings, 6A1, Vijay Patel, item number 19-a011, location is 5665 Old Salem Highway, Commission District is 8, the county commissioner is Pettis Reed. Size of the site is approximately 1.42 acres. Tax map is 123. The existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you and good evening, Commission members. Hope everybody's doing well today. As you stated, this property is located along Highway 99 at the intersection of Highway 99 and Old Salem Road. This is the western of the two, southwestern, I guess, of the two intersections of Old Salem and Highway 99. The applicant is proposing, as was stated, to zone the subject property to commercial services for future development. There's no concept plan that has been included with your agenda materials, as there's no use has been identified. It appears to be for speculative purposes. Access to the properties, you can see from the map on your screen right now, the aerial photo, currently is along Old Salem Road. If they were to have any new or modified access points along Old Salem Road, those would have to be approved by the county highway department. Highway 99 is a state route, State Route 99. If they were going to have any access points along State Route 99, of course, they would have to have TDOT approval for that. Regardless of where these access points may be, any verification of those criteria would have to be done via a site plan. So even if it's zoned that way, you would still see a site plan come back for your consideration at the planning commission. Commercially zoned properties, regardless if they're commercial services, commercial neighborhood, or commercial general, all require a type 2 buffer to be installed adjacent to residentially zoned property. You can use existing plantings toward that buffer requirement, but a landscaping plan, again, would call out whatever new plans they would have to do on the site and would have to meet county requirements. And of course, our performance standards regarding dust, noise, odors, et cetera, would also have to be met as well. This property is located within a rural center according to our comprehensive plan. It's also along an urban-style corridor, which is what Highway 99 is labeled as. The city of Murfreesboro has annexed a large amount of land surrounding this property. You can kind of see the yellow background there. That's all land that has been annexed into the city of Murfreesboro. If you look at the zoning map of the area, you actually have a copy of the zoning map on your iPads in your agenda materials, but Mike's also got a map of that area here. You can see the property there is where Mike's kind of got his pointer right now. The property that's in the red color and the yellow color, those are all properties within the city limits of Murfreesboro, and that's their zoning. You can see, you see a lot of commercial highway zoning directly across the street, just up the street a little bit from New Salem Highway. Commercial highway is one of the city's heavier commercial designations, more similar to our commercial general than, not, you know, apples-to-apples by any means, but fairly similar to that. So that just gives you an idea of some of the surrounding zoning in that area. With that, we, staff, really, we've received, that I'm aware of, just the one phone call regarding this for informational purposes. I know personally, I haven't talked to anybody about this zoning request since we had the signs out and sent the notices, but with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Doug, did you ever hear back from the city? I know Rom reached back out to you, but did you hear anybody from the planning staff at the city on their thoughts?
Yes, if you look in your agenda packets, toward the end, after you get past the maps and the zoning map, I did hear back from their traffic director, Ron Balachandra, and he had several questions that he had there. Again, I'm looking at it right now on mine. Of course, you want to know what they're planning to put there, of course, you know, again, this is more speculative. The large track of land he was referring to across the street is the Donnell property, which is already in the city. Possible future signal location needs to make sure that it's adequate right-of-way along Old Salem Road and Highway 99, and then turn lane improvements along New Salem and Old Salem would be required based on traffic. But of course, all of that would be dependent upon the use of the property. So yes, we did reach out to them, and that's the response we received back.
Any questions for staff at this time? Is the applicant present? Would you please come forward? Would you please come forward? Right, if you would, face that way, face the audience, and give us a brief explanation of what you have in mind.
Hi, my name is Bagesh Patel.
Vijay Patel.
We are the partner, and currently, we just wanted to turn that into the commercial. And I own a subway down the road, and I serve in community since 2010. For right now, we don't have any plans far as that, we're just trying to have it like as an investment property, but maybe down the road, we're planning on doing it like a subway with a drive-through, pre-standing.
Questions of the applicant? Very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item 19-a011, Vijay Patel. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. If you would, please name an address for the record.
My name is Roger Holland. I live at 5633 Old Salem Road. It's the property right next to the property in question. And I'd just like to bring up a few points. We're wondering how this would affect traffic in that area. Traffic is already bad right there, especially when schools in. You get a lot of traffic coming up Old Salem, a lot of traffic coming down 99, and with the new high school opening now, it's going to be even worse. I know Mr. Patel, he just spoke, we don't know what kind of property is going to go in there. You know, is it a convenience market? Is it a 24-hour market? Is it a gas station? You know, what kind of construction will it entail? Will it be blasting? It's right next to my property. What would that do to the structural integrity of my home? Unfortunately, stores have a reputation, if it's a convenience market of any kind, of loiterers. You know, would there be people, even if the stores closed at night, would there be people loitering around the property? You know, would there be, you know, if it's a 24-hour market, would the people be pulling in the parking lot all hours of the night with the radio blasting? I mean, this is a quiet residential street. It's just four houses, counting the one on the corner, two across the road, and a fire station right across from our house. And we just, it's a quiet area. We just like it to remain that way. There's all kind of commercial property, as you can see, right on the other side of 99. That's all been zoned commercial, and that would be tailor-made for any, anything of this sort to go in. So really, what we want to bring forth is, you know, we're not asking if anything else, we just want to keep what we have, a quiet neighborhood, and it's a beautiful home on the corner, too. It's, it's got a huge lot, it's a beautiful home. That's all I've got to say. If anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Doug, is there a home on this lot? Is there a building on this lot that we're talking about?
Yes, sir. There's an existing house on the property.
There is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we saw that long span there of open space, but the house...
That's all the same lot. It's all part of the same property. Yes, sir.
My name is Tim Justice. I live at 5613 Old Salem Road, next door to Mr. Holland, by the way. And this is a three houses in this one area right here that are in a silent shade subdivision. And I just don't understand why they want to take and tear down a house and put in commercial property there. That's about all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Justice. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. One quick question before we go on. Will this house be raised, Mr. Patel? Will the house stay, or will it be raised? Will it be taken away? Could you speak up just a little bit, please? I'm sorry, you're going to need to come up to the mic where we can hear you.
Now, we don't have any plans to do anything, just to come into the motion or...
Say anything.
If you would.
Now, we don't have any plan, but if we do anything in future, the house will tear down.
When a commercial business goes in there, the house will be raised?
Right.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Doug, I want to be the first to ask the question. Under this commercial services zoning, what are the possibilities here? You know, I think the speculative, the speculative thing makes everybody a little bit nervous.
Yes, sir.
And what can they possibly do?
Well, in commercial services, just for those who are here, it's what we call our center of the road, commercial zoning designation. It's not the most restrictive, but it's not the most permissive either. It's kind of in the middle. It does not allow residential, permanent residential uses like townhomes, single-family, anything like that. As far as things like that could be there, like community assembly uses, churches, something like that would be allowed. Large, well, I'm sorry, a large community assembly would be allowed by special exception, which means it would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Community education, which would be a small school or something like that, would be allowed in that district. As far as commercial activities and things are concerned, you would be allowed to have like animal care, veterinarian services. You could have automobile repair servicing. You could have consumer repair shops, construction sales or services, indoor entertainment and amusement services. You could have like a financial-type institution, a bank, something like that. Food and beverage services, restaurants, convenience markets would fall under also, would be, well, that'd fall under general retail, but something like that would be allowed. General personal services, like nail salons, barber shop, something like that would be allowed in that district. Let's see, what else here? Medical services, something like that would be permitted. Well, transient accommodations, which would be like a hotel, but I mean, obviously, this site really isn't large enough for something like that. Undertaking services would be allowed. Nothing industrial is permitted, and then things like agricultural sales and services and things like that would be allowed. That's just a general rundown.
Doug, there appears to be a building diagonally across from this track, with the building with the green roof on it.
Yes.
And maybe some concrete out front.
Yes.
It's still RM, and what...
That's the, that's the fire station.
Okay.
Buffering, explain buffering to...
Yes, there are three levels of buffering in our zoning ordinance, type 1, 2, and 3. Type 1, of course, is the least restrictive, or the least of those buffers. Type 3 is the most, the most intense of the buffers, so type 2 is kind of in the middle. That would require a 30-foot buffer without a fence or visual screen. If there was like a privacy fence or wall or something like that, that can be taken down to 15 feet, and then there's required plantings that go along with that. There's more plantings required if you don't have a fence or a wall. If you do, the amount of plantings is reduced.
Doug, let me ask you, it's been mentioned here that this is part of a subdivision? That this house is in a sub...
There is a subdivision plat for it, yes. I mean, now...
Subdivision carry any type of restrictions or anything, or...
Well, there may be, but that wouldn't be something we would get involved in. Now, understand at the same time, when it comes, when we talk about subdivisions, I mean, from a planning standpoint, when we're looking at a strict definition of what a subdivision is, it's any subdivision, it's any property that's under five acres. That's considered a subdivision to us. But you can see Mike's got the plat up on the screen, the small, looks like at the time, that was a little five lot, right there. But technically, yes, it is a subdivision of land. But as far as restrictions, that'd be something that the owner of the property would have to deal with.
Let me ask you this, too. With the proximity this property is to the property across the road that is already zoned commercial for the city of Murfreesboro, if in the time period of sometime that Mr. Patel has this property, if he still could have the possibility of sometime that he could also request that his property be taken into the city of Murfreesboro, couldn't he?
Yes, sir. He can do that without having to get...
That's where it's located.
Correct, yeah. And he doesn't even have to have commercial zoning for that. If he has commercial zoning, it comes into the city with an interim classification.
It would automatically come that way at that time.
Correct. Now, if he doesn't have, let's say he doesn't get zoning here, when he makes a request for annexation, if he were to do that in the future, he can request commercial zoning simultaneous with annexation.
At that time.
So, yeah, I mean, one's not dependent on the other.
Doug, as far as immediate use, though, if he doesn't do anything with this for a certain period of time, in the interim, it can stay, even though it's zoned commercially, it can still be used as a residence?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
But it couldn't be subdivided into two residences or anything?
It can't, right. It can stay the way it is. Now, if you were to subdivide it, that might cause some issues. I'd be a little hesitant about that, because he'd be creating a new lot without a principal use on it, and that's not an allowable use in that district, a single-family home. But to answer your first question, if he just wanted to continue using it as a single-family home, as long as it wasn't discontinued beyond 30 months, he could do that. It can change ownership, or if he decides to lease the property, he can rent the property, someone leaves, someone comes in, like a month or two later, he can do that in perpetuity, unless he redevelops the property or he loses the grandfathering status. Again, that'd be 30 months without any use.
And as long as it stays single-family, he doesn't have to do the landscape buffering.
Correct.
It just remains the same.
Correct, yeah. It would just be, no one, yeah, driving by, you would never know it was zoned commercial. That's correct.
Hey, Doug, do we, if we were to approve, and later, they come back with a site plan and have a decided-upon business, and if that were a market, was a 24/7 market, does this body have the ability to designate hours of operation?
No, sir. We don't.
Might go back a slide or two from where you were.
Which one? What did it have on it?
The plat.
Oh.
One before the, one you had before the plat.
This one?
That one.
This is the most recent plat where it appears that a couple of the lots were combined together?
That's my question. The half-moon-shaped portion on the right there, it is a portion of that lot, correct?
It has been combined with Lot 3.
So it's not state property, then?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, although it is commercial all around it and is surrounded by it, it still doesn't give us the reason to vote for this to be turned into some kind of commercial lot. These people do live there, and it was a subdivision, they all moved there for that particular reason, so I make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny the rezoning request. Any other questions or comments?
Island for the other houses with the commercial all the way around them.
I'm with Charlotte. I would feel better if we had a more specific use for it. Rhonda comments on speculative zoning a lot of times, and that's, appears to be what this is.
I would add that, you know, a lot of the comments that I made regarding the comprehensive plan, something we do talk about in here occasionally, is a timing element along with things. I mean, yes, there is other commercially zoned property in very close proximity across the street. Now, those tracks, for the most part, I mean, those, a lot of those are wide-open tracks, or they may have a house on them, but they have a lot of acreage with them. It might be just a matter of a timing, like you said, timing element, maybe a better idea of what we're talking, what is being proposed there, a better chance to react to something. You know, the commercial services zone does allow for a variety of uses, quite a few, and it's not as wide open as, say, commercial general, but if the applicant were to come back with a more specific use, you know, that might be something that might be considered a little bit more.
Other questions? We have a motion and a second to deny, so a yes vote would be to deny, okay? Holo's in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion to deny carries. Thank you. This will still be scheduled to be heard before the full county commission on August the 15th, that's a Thursday evening, and the public hearing will be held at 6:30 p.m. in this room. August 15th, Thursday, 6:30. This body is a recommending body. The county commission will have the final say-so. And that will also involve a public hearing as well, okay? Item 6A2-19-a012, Kahalif Haji. Location is 9079 Shelbyville Highway, Commission District is 6. The county commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately 1 and 1/3 acres. Tax map is 179. Existing zoning is RL residential low-density. Proposed zoning is CG, commercial services. Doug?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. The applicant's proposing to zone this property to commercial general in order to use the subject property as a used car lot. Motor vehicles, motor vehicle, excuse me, sales are classified as vehicular craft and related equipment sales in our zoning ordinance, and commercial general is the first zone that does allow that use. The applicant has submitted a concept plan with his application, which is included with your agenda materials on your iPads. The concept plan shows parking and display area in the front. The existing house would be renovated into an office, with the existing garage being upgraded for use as a repair and a detailing area. They're also proposing, oh, excuse me, a smaller storage structure, you can see that I've labeled on there to be removed, that would be taken off of the property. Access to this property is along 231 Shelbyville Pike and would continue to be. Any new or modified access points, again, this is a state road, well, it's a federal road, but at the same time, TDOT would be the one to look at that. Any new or modified access points would have to be approved through TDOT. Commercially zoned properties, again, commercial general zoned properties follow the same buffering guidelines that commercial services does, be a type 2 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned property. Property along the north, you can see, has a large industrial building on the north side, so that would not require any buffering on that side, but the rest of the surrounding areas residentially zoned, they would require it there. A landscape plan would be required, again, along with all the site plan requirements to ensure conformance with those buffering regulations. I would say as well, even if the zoning is approved, they would still have to submit a site plan for new parking and display areas, it'll have to be of a hard, dustless surface, paved, so just because they get the zoning doesn't mean they can start operating the next day. They would have to come in with a site plan before we'd let them get moving with that. And performance standards also would be, have to be abided by as well. This property, similar to Highway 99, is also classified as an urban-style corridor, which does anticipate non-residential uses. Property immediately to the north, as we talked about a little earlier, is zoned light industrial. There is also other commercially, commercial generally zoned property located on both the north and south sides of the intersection of Shelbyville Pike and Poly Thicket Road. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Doug. Questions for staff?
Many calls, any calls, Doug?
I hadn't received any calls about this, no, sir. Something else I'll mention while we're talking about this, Mike, if you could bring up the floodplain. Okay. The property, we're having some, maybe some, a few little mapping issues, but the property in and of itself is not zoned, or is not in a flood zone, flood hazard area, as identified by FEMA, but pretty much every area around it, it's kind of like a high point around it, a lot of the areas surrounding it is. So that's something that I brought out in the staff report, I just wanted to make sure that it was brought out here as well.
And it may be a question for the applicant, but do you know how many people they're proposing to work here? I mean, is there sewer issues? Is it on septic or anything like that that's of concern?
Yeah, that, I don't have any information on that. That'd be the applicant question. Yes, sir. And you can see the flood map's up right there, all that blue surrounding it, that's all 100-year floodplain, but then you see his properties above that. So just, again, just really for more informational purposes than anything.
Other questions for staff? Is the applicant here? Is the applicant present? Would you please come forward? You, Mr. Haji? If you would, speak into the mic and give us a brief explanation of what you want to do.
My name is Kahalif Haji. I have a car lot that was like 11 years ago, same road. I bought this property, applied for commercial, opened the car lot over there.
Any questions?
Yes, we were three people over there, yes.
This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item 19-a012 for Kahalif Haji. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Doug, your recommendation? Your recommendation?
We recommended approval. Staff recommended approval.
And the pitch property north with the large building, what is it zoning?
Right above it, you're talking about to the north? It's zoned light industrial.
Light industrial?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Doug, besides that, the light industrial business there, can you zoom out a little bit and let me see where the next closest commercial is?
Yes, ma'am. It's right to the north.
And what is that business? And what is that business exactly?
I'm not exactly sure what that's being used for now. It's been over several, I think, things over the years. What's currently being used as, I'm not entirely sure. Sorry.
I live out there and I don't know what it is. Whatever it is, it's enclosed in that building. There's nothing on the outside.
Not a lot of traffic in and out. So Doug, help me understand the thinking along approval on this. Because besides that one business, I don't see, this seems like just a very rural area to me. And so I know that's a busy road, and I know a lot of that's eventually going to turn into commercial. But again, when we talked about timing, I'm just curious if the timing is right for this rezoning, so.
Well, you can see, I'm sorry, you can see on the map before you, both, that's right to the north of the subject property at Poly Thicket Road. You've got Commercial General on both. You've got some Commercial Services a little further up the road. You've got some heavy industrial zoned property in that area. I believe that's Holden Concrete right there. My thinking was, just looking at the area, of course, you see a variety of commercial, industrial-type uses along 231 in this area. It's not, I mean, it's immediately adjacent to an existing light industrial use. I mean, if you're going to have any extension of commercially or industrially zoned property, it seems that one budding up to it would make the most sense. So that's, that's kind of where I was coming from when I was looking at that.
On those two parcels that are Commercial General, do you know what those businesses are?
They look like trailer, trailer businesses, yes, sir.
It's Midway Trailers, they, they do a very nice job, and they're very busy.
I guess that was part of my thinking as well in terms of, of traffic and in and out and that sort of thing with that light industrial beside it. I'm thinking if you've got an employer, you've got set hours, you know, depending on what it is, you don't have a lot of activity in and out, but if you've already got a trailer place up there with a lot of in and out, I don't know, a car lot, when I think about going down 231 and somebody seeing a car that they like and slamming on their brakes to pull in there, just, it just scares me a little bit. So that's part of the reason, I'm just trying to think through the logistics of, is, is this the right property at the right time?
Mike, will you go down to the south some more on the zoning? Down there on Campground Road up there, that's, yeah, it's a little bit there.
Yeah, there's, those have been, those are pre-existing. Those were zoned by industrial when we brought those into the, the new ordinance. I get phone calls about that every now and again. I think someone was going to use that for.
A car lot now?
Yeah, that's what I was, I was just thinking, I think it was a car lot. Somebody, I mean, it's been several months, but someone did call us about that.
And Doug, this will, this will require a site plan?
Yes, he'll have to, again, now, if he wants to use the existing buildings, that's fine. Of course, they'll have to be brought up to commercial code. But he's not going to be able just to park in the front area without improvements being made, you know, as far as paving and all that. So yes, a site plan would be required. Now, what you're seeing there, Mike zoomed into that, a lot of that was pre-existing. And if I remember right, there were some variances granted in the past on that property to allow the parking the way that it is now. Because I remember that being a discussion point when the, the folks called me about that.
You've not had any calls?
No, sir.
No.
At least, I'll say, I haven't taken any personally, and I don't recall anybody in the office telling me that they had either.
Well, it's, the crossover there is almost in front of this piece of property, is it not? The highway crossover?
Almost there, and that would be one thing that we would look at on site plan.
Yeah.
I would probably recommend, let me go to the other map.
Mike, if you would, get your mic, there you go.
Yes, sir, sorry. Let me zoom in a little bit here. I would prefer that they more than likely share an entrance. If we could get the adjacent property owner to agree to allow them to use that, to come in this way.
Down where the big, big building is.
Sorry?
Where the large building is.
Yes, sir, right, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Or move the proposed entrance for this business farther away from that to discourage people from using that as a crossover and then cutting into the building through here.
I see what you're saying, because they will, it's so close, I'll just go this way, yeah. That's true, that's true.
So if I had my druthers, I'd rather that they enhance this entrance and both of them share it right at this crossover, the median cut.
There's a car lot just up the road, probably about a mile on the right. There's one just about another mile on the right. There's a lot coming out this way. Car lot seemed to be the business of the day, and you make, staff's okay with all that. I'm making a motion to approve it.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 19-A012 for Kahalif Haji. Any other questions or comments? Holo's in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any objection? We have one no vote, Gail. Motion to approve carries, thank you. Item 6A3 has been withdrawn. 6A4-19-A014, Blake Cothran for Judy and Cothran. Location is the intersection of Lebanon Pike and Cut Off Road. Commission District is 2. The county commissioner is Steve Piercy. Size of the site is approximately 8 acres. Tax map 24. The existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property probably looks familiar. The pattern book and the rezoning, at the time, was called Cothran Retreat. It's now called Griffith Park, was originally approved by the Board of Commissioners back in November of 2015. The subject property that we're looking at right now, at the time, when it was originally submitted, was part of the PUD request and was shown as a future commercial area. Ultimately, it was removed from consideration due to concerns from the residents in the area. The applicant now would like to revisit the zoning of the property. Has proposed commercial services zoning as opposed to making it part of the planned development. Proposed uses identified by the applicant in their supplemental pack include commercial, office, or restaurant usage. Also, in their concept plan, which there is a copy of on your iPads, and we actually have a copy we can bring up here, which Mike has just done. A mini storage facility is also shown on the concept plan. Now, under commercial services zoning, if they did want to go forward with a mini warehouse-type facility, that would require Board of Zoning Appeal action as well, with a special exception should this be approved. So just to make you aware of that. The concept plan does show potential layout for the site. Since this is not a PUD request, this is only conceptual, and therefore, it's not binding. The two buildings they're showing on this concept plan totaled about 28,000 square feet with parking areas, which you see on Parcels 1, and Parcel 2, again, being reserved for the future possible mini warehouse-type facility. Allowed uses, we discussed that earlier, but I can go into that in more detail if you would like. Access to the property is shown along the future, I believe it's called Anime Road. As you can see right there, Mike is highlighting. The no access at this point is being shown along Lebanon Pike. Any proposed access to Lebanon Pike would have to be, again, have to be approved by TDOT. Although staff would not encourage any access too close to the intersection of Cut Off Road, we would actually prefer to see the access the way that they've currently got it off of that little side street right there. Commercial zoned properties, again, would be required to do a type 2 buffer. Existing plans could be counted toward that, and performance standards would also have to be met. With that, I think we did get some informational calls about this particular application. But beyond that, if you have any other questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Questions for staff at this time? The applicant available? Would you please come forward? Just a brief explanation of what you're doing?
Doug kind of summed it up. This was something we originally put in the PUD in the beginning of the development. D.R. Horton is now, I think we just, is about to start Phase 3 of the residential. Brought a easement road in through the middle right there that would allow access to both of the commercial, even though there's going to be additional turning lanes to 231 also and, and part of the improvement to Cut Off Road. You can see a little bit of the dirt there, it's already been done. We feel like, as y'all have talked before, timing is important. We feel like with the density going in right here in the residential, the need for those is, I think, important. We also have the property across the street that's already zoned commercial, where the gentleman's Watson Barn sells his buildings right there. He does a really good business. He loves the location, talks about the traffic that comes through. We designed the residential neighborhood with the commercial in mind in the long run. So the steps system that's in place in the residential neighborhood is already designed to hold capacity for the commercial. One of the main reasons we have put in the concept plan to put self-storage on that far top portion would be less traffic to it, really, and the, the lack of footprint into that step system. It really will have no impact whatsoever on septic or sewer, because there may be one bathroom in it, in an office, which would allow a little bit more flexibility for the track one down there with two, those two buildings. We're definitely not married to the layouts there in the bottom. If we could rework that detention a little bit and maybe make it a little bit part of the buffer to the residential, some other things we've talked about, but that's pretty much it.
Any questions for the applicant?
Doug mentioned that it was withdrawn because of community concern. Have you had anyone, Doug said he hasn't received calls, have you?
Spoke with Mr. Piercy for a good while, and some of the owners around there, no real, because now we have some improvements to the roads. Mr. Piercy was really, I think, thankful that he had two new schools coming in right around the corner and really thought that there was going to be a need in the future for that. Didn't see a whole lot of problem. I haven't had any calls or any egregious complaints of any sort. That may change tonight, I don't know.
Other questions? Thank you. This time I'll declare a public hearing open for item number 19-A014 for Blake Cothran. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
My question is, if you put this in and you get the CS rating, are you going to change your mind and put something else there? That's my question. And what are you going to do with the other part of the property that's on the other side of that little access road?
Hold, hold, hold on.
Also.
Your question needs to be asked to us, not to a member of the audience, okay? So if you would, stand up to the mic. I don't think we heard your question, so if you would, repeat it again.
The part of the property that's on the other side of that access road, right there. That's correct. And what's he going to do with that? And also, I don't think it's the right time for this. I really don't. We just went through a blasting period with drainage for that subdivision, put some cracks in my pool. Not bad, but they're there. So there are some other people who want to speak, and that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Piercy. Anyone else? Mr. Cothran had something to say that might relate to that question. Did you have something to say?
I was going to answer your question about that. That property, I guess, would be north, I thought they would be.
That's the proposed mini storage facility. That's the proposed mini storage facility on there.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
So I'm Ted Gamble from 708 Blue Ridge. We're in Harvest Woods. Can you bring up the plot map that you had, the first, first one that was up there? Yeah. So mainly a question about the road development here. It, it looks like you're showing a left-hand turn lane for northbound traffic. Is that correct? Down at the very bottom of the, of the diagram here?
That was part of it.
The, the turn lane improvements that you're seeing on there were part of the subdivision, not specifically for the commercial element, but those were part of the approval for the residential portion, the subdivision that was for, for Griffith Park now.
Those will be installed for Section 3, which they're constructing right now, this section here.
So going north on 231, you'll have your.
You'll have a left turn lane going into Cut Off Road, and you also have a left turn lane going onto Anime, I think it's, whatever the name of that road is. And then you will have a right turn lane here and also down at Cut Off Road. And then you have a dedicated right and left now on Cut Off Road where the, and where they elevated the intersection.
In your, the first page of the document, you say certain activities have lower performance characteristics or prohibited. What, give me an example of those.
Are you talking about, under the purpose of the district? Is that what you're referring to?
Right, yes.
Yeah, okay. This is a general description. This comes directly out of the zoning ordinance. It's just a general description of what Commercial Services is. The purpose of the zone was not to, again, I mean, just reading verbatim from this, not intended to generate large volumes of truck traffic or certain activities that have low performance. In other words, things that have more noise, more, large truck traffic, things associated with them. Those are more something you would see in Commercial General, maybe a light industrial, something like that. That's what they're referring to on that.
So we, we did have concerns about this initially when they went through the first rezoning. This is a bad intersection. First of all, I want to thank you for the improvements you, you did to that.
Can you talk into the microphone a little bit?
Took out the S curve, so we really appreciate that. I don't see how this is going to help that situation. It's going to bring more traffic to that intersection.
Let me remind, this is a public hearing. You can address this commission, but you can't address anyone out there.
So it, it stated that, first of all, we don't know what kind of businesses are going to be here. It's hard for me to get excited about that. Everything that's up and down 231 today is either used car lots, some, some old auto service garages, an old tire shop, things like that. I, I don't see how anything that comes on this corner is going to add property value to the, to the subdivision that was there originally in Harvest Woods. We have 350,000 to $500,000 homes out there. And, and there's no way that any business that comes into this is going to bring value to that property. We're worried about traffic, we're worried about property value, light pollution, noise, all those things that, that everybody always mentions in these situations. I liked your comment earlier about people are going to go driving by there, oops, I want to stop, and you're right in the middle of 231, which is already a hazardous intersection to begin with.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julie Hudgens. I would just like to say I echo Mr. Gamble's comments and his analysis of the situation. There's one other piece that I would like to add to it, though. I think anytime we can use data to drive our, or inform our decisions, it's a good idea to do and look at. And so I was doing some research because I didn't want to just get up and complain. I wanted to have some facts or some things, hard things for us to think about. So I found an article that was published in the Journal of Urban Economics, because Chicago, as you can imagine, they've invested a lot of time and money and investments to see what they can do to help or mitigate some of the crime that they see. And they did the big study that looked at shifting zoning from residential to commercial. And so, I gave you the journal it's in, but if you wanted to reference it later, they showed a shift from residential to commercial is associated with roughly 1.2 more robberies and 2.5 more assaults per 1,000 residents. Now, it does go in to say there's some things that mitigate that, so it's not a hardcore increase. Some of the things that mitigate that were, you know, the communities that are designed to be the live, work, play communities, those actually, you increase the commercial, it doesn't have that same impact because you have eyes and people out and about wondering all the time, and that's not what our neighborhood is like. So, just some things to consider. It's just, it doesn't seem like the right, the right place or the right time for something like that, in addition to the traffic and the, the schools that are opening and the logistics getting in and out of that area as they are now, so.
Thank you, Ms. Hudgens. Would you please state your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Cheryl Gamble. I'm at 708 Blue Ridge Drive. I originally was one of the complaints regarding the 2015, when this subdivision was proposed on Cut Off Road. We spoke with the developer at that time and said, "We do not want commercial." In 2015, that was turned down. We found out last week that it was back on the table again. The reason I didn't come forward sooner, our contact Doug, is the sign is probably 10 to 15 feet off of Cut Off Road in grass that is knee-high or more. So, my question is, who puts that sign up?
Our staff puts it up.
So, I mean, if you, and realizing, I go up and down that road pretty much daily. It was so hidden from view for me that I didn't notice it, and when I did notice it, had to stop and go out in the grass to take a picture so I could call and find out what was going on. Before in 2015, we received notices in the mail that said that we were looking at zoning this property, and we could come and participate, and spoke from, I think the meeting started originally was in May or June of 2015, and finally finalized in November of 20, excuse me, 2015. We had opportunity to come to every meeting and express our concerns. So, first of all, that, that's my question to you, is to find the sign was not there, and why you've not heard from me sooner. My question, as always, or my concern to the committee is, here we're looking at making this, we're taking down all of this natural barrier right now for the noise off of 231. We're going to take down all of that tree front, make it commercial, put up a property that we have no say as to what it's going to be. If it's a strip mall or whatever, you can say, it can be a subway shop, it can be a barber shop, whatever. We have no say in what goes in that property. So, we'd like to not have that zoned commercial. When you speak of the residents also, in the new subdivision there in Griffin Park, those are all empty lots. Who's to say that those people wanting to buy a house that's $300,000 plus has any say as to what is behind their home? And we're looking at a level-two barrier? Come on, guys. Who, who wants a commercial property behind you with, tell me again, what is the level-two barrier?
As far as the width, well, it can...
Yeah, what is it?
Yeah, well, it can be, without a solid visual screen, it has to be 30 feet. If you have the solid visual screen, it can be down to 15 feet, but then there's plantings along with that as well. There's not as many if you have a solid visual screen than if you don't, but if you don't have one, there's more plantings that way.
So, so my concern there, again, is the fact that the people who are, are looking at bringing their families in have no idea of the fact that this is going to be a, a commercial property directly behind their homes. They're going to buy a lot now, and they're going to come in there, and a year from now, two years from now, after they've put their money in a house, they're going to find out that we're now a, a commercial building that's going to be behind their homes. And that's going to directly affect their resale value. You can't say that it won't. So, I don't know that I have a lot of questions on it. I'm disappointed, the fact that 2015, we came in, and it was taken off the table, and we thought it was a dead issue, and now here we are, 2019, we're back fighting again for what should have been a done process, and the fact that it was going to be residential property. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? At this point, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'll go back to Mr. Cothran. Did you have another comment that you wanted to make?
I was speaking to the members that they had.
If you would, talk into the mic. This, this is on television, and nobody out there can hear you unless you talk into the mic and speak loudly.
The, well, a couple of things. The traffic, let's just talk through that. There will be, we've added turn lanes, not only to Cut Off Road, but also turning lanes, center and what'll be right turn lane, coming in there to what is going to be, what'll be Malcolm Way right now. The entrances to the commercial will come off of, our plans to come off of Malcolm Way here. Should not impact, in fact, it should lessen the traffic that's going to be on Cut Off There should be nobody stopping and getting hit, and there should, there should be adequate ingress egress on both middle and side after those improvements are done. They're in the middle of them now. There shouldn't be any more blasting. Pretty much, all the blasting is going to have been done residentially. Again, as, when we planned the, the residential development to begin with, we designed the step system to fit the commercial. Just like, you might think that nobody really wants to have, live with their back up to a commercial property, really, nobody residentially wants to have their back up to 231 either. We feel like this is the best need, talking to Doug and the total plan for that around it. Again, and the success of the commercial across, and talking to those guys is really one of the things we've done. The other thing, I think, that's going to really impact what the uses are, I know you're concerned about what'll be there, probably not going to be things like a barber shop, things that are going to use a lot of water, that are going to have a heavy impact on the septic, are not going to be allowed. That thing is designed to certain gallons a day. Again, the reason for the mini storage on the far end side, I know right now Jamie's designing a lot of neighborhoods with self-storage already in and part of the HOA.
I have no storage, clear? I'm, I'm sorry. No questions, none. Public, public hearing is over.
The, with HOAs running self-storage facilities, I feel like with the density, again, with Griffith Park, in the addition, the third phase is going to be going through, that'll be a great amenity to that neighborhood. That'll be used probably a lot by the people in the neighborhood and, and surrounding developments that are currently going in. Again, as far as exact uses and what's going to be there, and you haven't say so, and what shops are going to be there, even as a developer and builder, I don't know what's going to be there. I think you knew from the beginning, this is a family farm. It's been, this piece of land has been in the family a long time. You know, that road going through the middle will be named after my grandfather. It'll be something that we hold, we keep. It's not something that we're going to do, you know, slap it up and be done, and, and moving on. It'll be something that we do, we take care of and hold in the investment portfolio. Hopefully, my kids will be dealing with it one day when I'm long gone. I think we're going to do it right, just like, hopefully, we did Griffith Park. We tried to do the things that you wanted in terms of traffic, taking the S curve out, and, and doing the best we could to make sure that was right. We let one of the best builders in the country do the building in there. I think they're doing a good job. They're selling a lot of houses, and it seems residentially will be happy. I feel like this will be another good addition to that area, and I just think you're getting a lot of traffic right now on Lemon Road because, and 231, because it, they have to drive a long way to get to anything. That's my two cents on those. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Cothran. Commissioners?
Chairman, I think, this is our third one tonight. We denied the first one because of, as Commissioner Allen refers to speculative zoning. We approved the second one because it did have a concept plan. The guy had a plan of action of what he wanted to do. We're back to this one. It's more speculative in nature. We really don't know what's going to take place. My concern is directly tied to the subdivision and how it is designed out without knowing anything. My biggest question still, as a whole, is what, what is our desire as a planning commission on what we want out in some of these rural areas? You know, what's the best use of the land? Yes, from my, Doug, I believe, the research you did and what you brought to us, based on the planning, comprehensive plan is right on par. Looking at it from, from a high level, I, it fits all the criteria. But, and I've been on both sides, and I, and I guess, in full confession, I've, probably in the past six years, seven years I've been on the commission, not been as consistent as I wanted to be, or felt like I should be. But looking at this, I'm begun, I'm beginning more and more to have a hard time voting for something that's speculative in nature when it comes to just about anything, especially commercial in a residential area. Now, does it make sense? I can argue both ways, I really do. If I live out where I, you know, where I lived in Lewis Towns, out 231 South, it was nice to go five minutes up the road to the Dollar General and get some things I need instead of having to drive all the way into Murfreesboro and get something. Before the Walmart out there on Joby Jackson or Veterans, you had to go on up into town. Of course, right across the street from its convenience store to get fuel. I understand that side of it as well, of the convenience in nature. But again, not knowing what it is is where, where I struggle. I personally, being tied to this subdivision, if they want to bring something back, I'll be happy to look at it, but I think it needs to be under a PUD, and needs, we need to know exactly what's going on. Again, my apologies to the commission or other commission members for probably, you know, being a little wishy-washy, but it, for me, it's time to, to, you know, really look at these in more detail and, and really decide what we want, especially with traffic and everything else. Again, that's just where I stand tonight. So I, with all that said, and with any further ado, I make a motion to deny this request.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Other comments? Let me ask a quick question. We've, we've approved a number of PUDs on major highways, and most of them, not most of them, but several of them have had properties on that major highway that they were sitting aside for commercial development. And we've approved, I can't remember us denying, some of those. And what, what reason do we need to present to not approve this one? There has to be a reason, in my mind, for us to, to disapprove this, other than speculative, because, let me just say that, they could say, okay, we're going to put a subway shop in there, but six months later, the subway shop could be gone and something else could be in there. So, whatever we did from a speculative position is not long-term planning. So, I've got a little concern about that, and my concern may be, may be wrong, but I, I know that there are a number of several PUDs that we've, that have developed, and they've set aside, Commercial Services, actually to serve that development and other developments, such as a sandwich shop or, or, or something else that, that, in my mind, we've done it in the past. We approve those. And what particular reason should we turn this down? I'm, I'm looking for an answer, maybe that's a little bit better than speculative. Commissioner Allen?
I think Chip actually gave you the answer, and that is, they're not asking to amend the PUD. They're not making this part of the PUD application, so there's no, there's no authority that we have in terms of architectural, of what it's going to look like. You know, we have site plan authorization, but that's it. So we don't have anything that allows us to make it be more compatible and cohesive with the rest of that PUD that they brought in place. They intentionally pulled it out of the PUD plan initially, when it was approved, and now they're trying to come in and go around the PUD plan by asking for just commercial directly. So Chip is exactly right. If this is going to be part of a PUD plan, they need to amend the PUD book, and it needs to be, that's the way it needs to be approached, not as a separate application.
Thank you for clarifying that, and thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, and I, and I can add something to that. I don't necessarily know if they have to actually open up the Griffith Park PUD. This could be a separate standalone application on its own. There'd be no reason, in my mind, now it'd be specific to those, that's one, well, I mean, it's the same tax man parcel, but in essence, it's two different properties, but it could still be a standalone plan development application on its own. It wouldn't have, you wouldn't have to open up Griffith Park for all that.
I agree with Chip. I, I would prefer to see this come back as a PUD, tie it down a little more, let the people in the neighborhood know what it's been. We've allowed semi-rural development for 40 years now, and these, I think these people ought to have a little input. I do, I think both of them made good points, and I think it could serve the neighborhood well, but I'd like to tie it down a little closer, like Rhonda said, with some, with a site plan, a specific use. I think we're going, not, I think we're going to put mini storage up there, but we're not tied to this. I'd rather see them tied to something.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
We've, we've got a motion and a second to deny. Any other questions to the motion?
I was just going to say that tying that PUD into some way to that subdivision would help the situation on those eastern properties, having an opportunity to know that there's something there, and not assuming that it's residential that they're backing up to. So I think that would be a, a better disclosure for everyone in that development.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Jeff, one more thing. I spoke to County Commissioner Piercy today, and he said he'd fielded, his terminology was several calls that were in opposition to this.
Okay. Thank you. Jim?
I've been back and forth on this, hearing the arguments, and I, I think, I like the idea of having some commercial... of having some commercial, some very light commercial near the neighborhood for the use of the people in the neighborhood, you know, a small Dollar General or, you know, a little sandwich shop or something. However, I hear loud and clear those arguments about, let's be specific on what it is, and I just want to go on record that I would support a PUD with very good, the proper type of neighborhood services. And I'm pretty, I'm pretty iffy and not very supportive of just a general, let's throw something out there and see what happens.
Thank you. Ready to vote? We have a motion and a second to deny 19-A014 for Blake Cothran. Any other questions or any other comments? All those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye. Any opposition? The motion to deny carries. Thank you. This also is scheduled to go before the full county commission, and there'll also be a public hearing at that county commission on Thursday, August the 15th. It'll be, the public hearing will be at 6:30 PM here in this room, August the 15th, 6:30 PM. Let me thank all of you that showed up to give us your opinion and input, and it's appreciated, and it helps us make a better decision. Thank you. Other business, Doug?
I don't have anything, Mike.
We have, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 22nd of July. That'll be a 9:00 AM meeting in the Planning Mess. Anyone have anything else? Thank you for your attendance or participation, and we are adjourned.